If we could call the meeting back in session. Before the presentation, I would like to introduce, we have the Vice Chair of the County Commission, Mr. Parks here today. We have Mr. Welton Cadwell, who is the cornerstone of the County Commission. And we have Leslie Campion. Thank you very much for being here. We have some CFAC members. Young raise your hand. All right. Thank you very much for being here. And Dr. Moxley?
Yes. Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. The next topic on our agenda is an update, a presentation on the impact fee update study, which was conducted and completed by Tyndall Oliver. We have Mr. Tyndall with us today. We have Ms. Kemp also from Tyndall Oliver, who will be doing our presentation. Of course, our very own Harry Fix, who has been the staff member that has been working with Tyndall Oliver on this work. And so what I would like to do, if it pleases the Board Chair, I'd like to have them go through the presentation. You should have a copy of the presentation. This will be kind of an executive summary, if you will, of the report. You also have a copy of the complete report. It is online on Board Dogs for anyone that is in the audience. There are some hard copies that some of you I see have already. So then at that point in time, we'll open it up for questions and discussion, if that is agreeable.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then I'll turn it over to Ms. Kemp.
Good afternoon. We have a brief presentation that goes over a little bit of the background, the findings of the technical study, and the next steps. So the last impact fee, technical study update, was completed for the school impact fee in 2011, and around the same time, the fees were suspended. Then they were reinstated in January 2014 at a 25 percent of the full fee. And that percentage was increased to 75 percent this year. And I think part of the requirement for that was to complete a new study to show that that 75 percent level is not overcharging anyone. And so the purpose of the impact fee update study is to update all the variables to reflect most recent and localized data that's consistent with the legal requirements. And it also helps satisfies the burden of proof being on the public agency side to show that the numbers are solid. Impact fees, as you know, it's a one-time capital charge to new development. And the purpose is to cover the cost of new capacity projects. They cannot be directly used for any operations, maintenance, and so on, but they do help those type of projects by freeing up more general tax dollars. This chart shows the growth trends over 70s. So you can see, of course, 70s, 80s, 90s, the growth rates were a lot more significant. That was also the time period we had major infrastructure investment completed in many jurisdictions, including Lake County. Then, since then, our growth rate is more stabilized and decreased somewhat. But as you can see, Lake County is still projected to grow ahead of Florida. It's still significant. And the other problem that many jurisdictions are kind of having to deal with now is the infrastructure that was built during the growth periods is older now. So the maintenance needs is becoming more significant. Again, the purpose of impact fees is trying to maintain the level of service. And of course, schools are the only infrastructure type that there's a state mandated level of standard in terms of the class size requirements. They do calculate the cost of growth, and that's also helpful to be consistent with all type of developments. And impact fees tend to be most needed when there's high growth and limited alternative And the schools and transportation tend to make up 80 percent of the infrastructure value in a community. That's why those two tend to be the most discussed impact fees and also the highest because of that. This is our basic impact fee formula.
The battery, though? Try the other one.
There's another one right there, yeah.
Second battery?
No, no. Oh, all right.
It's not working.
Okay, here, this one is working. Just leave the thumb off that.
Okay. Okay, good, sorry.
And you can't bend impact fees on getting our equipment updated either. Or batteries.
So the impact fee formula takes the cost of providing the infrastructure. That's the school buildings, buses, and so on. And from that, we subtract any non-impact fee revenue contributions from future development toward the same infrastructure. So we are not charging twice for the same amount. That net cost gets multiplied by demand, which is measured in terms of student generation rates for each land use. In terms of the findings, this is a summary slide kind of showing how the variables changed since 2011 study for single-family land use. And again, this is comparing 100 percent level of the 2011 study to current study. So in terms of demand, student generation rate for single-family homes showed a decrease since the last study. So that tends to decrease the impact fee. The cost per student increased some, so that tends to increase the fee. Credits per student also increased some, which tends to reduce the impact fee. So overall effect was a decrease for single-family land use compared to the 100 percent level. You know, a 75 percent level is still lower than what we calculate, but just 100 percent is slightly less. And this chart does the same type of analysis for multifamily and mobile home parks and every, mobile homes. Everything is the same except that, in the case of demand, these two land uses experienced the increase. So that's why their fees are higher than the 2011 rate. The primary components that we look at when we calculate the impact fee is looking at your inventory, that's your assets, looking at service delivery, level of service, and then calculating or estimating the value of current infrastructure today. So if you had to build the schools today, what would it cost? And from that, looking at your funding of expansion projects, capacity projects, what other revenue sources are available, so, you know, in terms of taxes and so on. And then the demand, again, is again, in terms of student generation rate. So the inventory includes about 43 traditional schools in the inventory or any components. We don't include charter schools, private schools. We only include traditional schools.
Yes?
Our conversion charter schools, and I had talked to Harry this morning, because two of our conversion charters are part of the debt service that we are holding. So although you did not include those, they are still on our building inventory, and we are paying. Those schools were built so many years ago, but we are still paying for those schools. So I had asked Harry, why wouldn't those be included when it's part of our debt service?
And actually, Ms. Kemp, when, just now, when saying charter schools, I believe you're actually thinking of non-conversion charter.
Right, yeah.
The ones that are conversion charter should be in these numbers. But the ones that are non-conversion, the ones that aren't in our buildings that we don't carry any capital debt for, wouldn't be in this.
Yes, that's correct.
But don't we have more than 43 schools?
The schools that weren't, the things that weren't included in this, Lake Hills is not included in it. Lake Tech Center is not included in it. Lee Opportunity is not included in any of these numbers. And anything that is a, I'll say, private charter, our non-conversion charter, is not included in these numbers. So an example of that would be South Lake Charter would not be in these numbers. But Mineola Conversion Charter would be in these numbers. Mascot Conversion would be in these numbers.
Round Lake.
Round Lake Conversion would be. Spring Creek would be. But not in...
Ali, Milestones, Imagine.
Those would not be, right.
Yeah. So we really only have the 43?
You have five that are non-conversion.
Right.
And they wouldn't be included.
And then when we first looked at it, we think 25 elementary schools, but what they did, and rightfully so, they took Spring Creek charter, conversion charter, and moved it out of elementary and put it as the multi-level. When I first looked at the list, I was thinking multi-level as being Lake Hills, but then Lake Hills was, because of its unique nature, was taken out of this whole exercise altogether.
Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, Harry, why wouldn't Lake Tech be included? It's an owned school. We're responsible for all the maintenance. Does anything to do with that particular building?
Same thing with Lake Hills.
Was that not in the last study?
Whether it was in the last study or not, I'm not certain. It may have been, but probably Lake Hills may have been, but they're not in this study.
Lake Tech?
Yeah.
I meant to say Lake Tech, I'm sorry.
No, but I'm saying, you did, Lake Tech, and I'm saying, and Lake Hills, both.
If they are a special school, we left them out. We tried to focus on traditional schools that are continuously provided instead of adding, but...
But you're consistent. None of those were included, only our conversions.
Right.
Okay.
But I think that they're still, they need to be included in there somewhere because we are responsible for the maintenance of those buildings.
Yeah, the only time they become into a play is when we look at the conversion from student station to student. We look at level of service, how many capacity, how many stations you have compared to the enrollment. And because of your level of standard, we are not able to include any available capacity. So even if we included those schools, they would, at that point, and I'm going to go over that, but at that point, they would almost get discounted. But we can't always make that change and include them.
Yeah.
That's part of the 8 million square feet of buildings that we're responsible for.
But the quick part is because of the credit side, it almost becomes a wash, whether you put it in or take it out. But we'll talk about that more specifically.
But in there, do we state that, because I don't remember this, state that Lake Hills and Lake Tech are intentionally not included for those reasons? Because I think it would be important that...
It's not in there.
I didn't remember seeing that.
Yeah, we have a list of schools that we did include, appendix A, the first table shows who we include, but we didn't put an explanation, and we can definitely add that.
I think that's, or else, I understand why, because it's a wash. But I also know people reading the document will not understand the wash part of it. And it looks like that's the only square footage we have, I think, getting to your point.
Okay.
And I just want to point out, we left drafts on this for the very purposes of us being able to go over and look for things that the Board might feel that we should hone in on.
Okay. Service delivery is measured in terms of square feet per student station, and it's based on the schools that the school district is likely to build in the future. So it's your prototype in the future, which is slightly less than the existing schools. It's about 5 percent fewer square feet in the case of elementary and middle, which results in a more conservative fee, but it's reflective of what you are likely to build in the future. And facility cost per station includes all costs related to building a school, from architectural site improvements, construction, furniture fixture, land purchase, and so on. And this chart has a lot of numbers, but basically, the way we estimated the construction costs, we looked at anything the district built or has estimates on, and we supplemented that information from recently built schools from other jurisdictions. Not too many districts built too many schools over the past few years, so we tried to increase the sample size, had discussions with the districts and facilities and so on. And then the land value was based on conducting a vacant land, looking at the vacant land sales throughout the county of similar-sized properties, where the school district is planning to purchase land, and some of the numbers they had, estimates, and then the overall vacant land value. So when we put all that together, it comes to about, on average, 30, almost 29,600 per student station cost. And it, of course, varies by level, but... We then need to convert that to cost per student. And in that case, that's when the available stations versus enrollment calculation comes to it. So if you have more available stations than the enrollment figure, that means the district is building more than one station for each student. And that's the investment this community has made, and that's our starting point. But then, we look at your level of service standard, and if the standard is saying 100 percent, we interpret the available capacity as a temporal situation. You don't intend to provide that additional capacity on an ongoing basis. So then we use the 100 percent standard over the, so we basically use lower of the two. Basically, level of service, achieved level of service measures the investment up to this point the community has made. And level of service standard measures the intent to continue at that level or at a different level. And we use the lower of the two to make sure that we are not overcharging. So right now, you have about 6 percent available capacity. Basically, here you can see, this is where, if we added those couple of schools, they would be shown under the capacity figures, and we would show even a little bit more available capacity, probably. But because we didn't charge for that, and we only charge it 100 percent, it's not making any difference in the final calculations. And then you'll see you have some deficiency in the case of elementary schools. It's about 3 percent more enrollment compared to permanent stations. And then the middle and high is where you have the available capacity. So we basically stayed almost with the same cost. It's like 29,200 per student. Then other cost components that are considered are the transportation, that's the buses and white fleet, and then the ancillary facility cost, maintenance buildings, administrative buildings, and so on. And they are relatively minor compared to, obviously, school costs. They're about $1,000 per student in each case. Then we looked at credits, which are accounting for any non-impact fee revenues that are likely to be contributed by future development. And so for that, we look at how you fund the expansion projects past five years and next five years. And then if there's any outstanding debt service that are associated with capacity projects, we give credit for that as well. So overall, we did two different options, and they are not, in terms of numbers, they are not that different, but just to recognize that district has some sales tax revenues right now, which may not, the sales tax is expiring in 2017, and it may not be renewed. So we did one option with the sales tax continuing on after 2017 and one without. So if the sales tax continues to be in effect, then it's about $930 credit per student. And if it's not renewed, it's about $730, so it's about 200. And the main reason for that is most of the sales tax is being used for maintenance projects, renovations. So it's not making a huge difference in terms of new capital in this case. That's the debt service credit, which is the bigger portion, is almost $2,000. And all of these, when we have ad valorem spending, property tax spending, we adjust for the fact that new homes tend to pay more compared to old homes. So we recognize that in the credit calculations. So then this chart is showing the net impact cost. So altogether, our total cost is about 31,000, that's with transportation and so on. And from that, we have about $27,000 to $3,000 credit. So the net cost per student is about 28,500. There's not a huge variation between the two scenarios. On the demand side, then we look at student generation rates, and that's based on the student addresses that district provided, and we match that with the property database to recognize, and you've done that in the past, too, so. And we have, right now, the schedule includes three land uses, single-family, multifamily, mobile home. And mobile home is used both for individual mobile homes on individual lots and mobile home parks. So the generation rates that resulted from this analysis is about .33 students for single-family. So basically, for every three homes, you have one student in terms of single-family, and multifamily is .28, slightly lower. Mobile homes is .2. On that one, we just wanted to note that there's a difference between mobile homes on individual lots and mobile home parks in terms of the rate. So it may be a good idea to maybe charge them separately. Just for consideration, we included that for your information. So mobile homes on individual lots are .24, whereas mobile home parks is .17, is much lower. Overall, it's .3.
And wouldn't that be because we have such a high adult communities, mobile home parks?
Yes.
Okay.
And this chart shows the generation rate comparison, and this is probably the biggest reason for the fluctuations. The single-family generation rate compared to 2011 study went down about 12 percent, and multifamily increased by 20 percent, and mobile homes increased 63 percent. Overall, generation rate is within 1 percent. That didn't change. It just, what seems to be happening is that families moved from single-family homes to more multifamily homes or mobile homes. And, you know, we talked about possibly being because of the economic downturn and so on. So the final calculated impact fee, it just takes the net impact cost per student and multiplies by the generation rate for each of the land uses. This chart shows the rates, both with the sales tax and without the sales tax. So the single-family full calculated rate is about 9,300. Right now, the fee that's being collected is about 7,700, that's 75 percent. And then multifamily is about 8,000, and mobile home combined is about 6,000. And if we compare that to the 100 percent level from 2011, you'll see that single-family decreases slightly, about 10 percent, and multifamily and mobile home are increasing. And this chart provides a comparison of other counties and what they are charging and what their fees were at 100 percent. So the very last column shows the full calculated rates in each community, and then the second to last is currently collected, and this is going from low to high. So you can see the ones, and I have one more chart here. So the collected rates are anywhere from $2,000 to $10,000, and the calculated rates go all the way up to $13,000 or so. And in terms of the next step is, after we get your input and recommendations, we'll finalize the report, and then it can be taken to County Commission and go through the implementation steps.
Start with questions up here, then I hear some questions on that front row, so we'll go there, too. You want to hear the first? Bill?
Especially Mr. Bill.
Would you like to ask any questions or make comments about some of this stuff?
Well, I was...
In the mic?
I wanted to make sure that sales tax calculation was in there, was in there, but I'm surprised at the...
Wait, wait a minute, we got to get you on record.
I wanted to see the sales tax computation, whether it passed or didn't pass. But I'm really surprised at the small variation in the number, if it did or didn't pass.
$200?
That's all.
The easy answer to that is, if you remember, Board, in the long-range plan that we've laid out, we took the dollars that are, to come from the sales tax, and we said those would be the dollars that we would use to, for modernization of existing facilities. And remember, it's one of the legs of the three-legged financially feasible capital plan. But the reason we made that decision is because the Board's decision was, we're going to look at impact fees to be a primary way to fund growth. So we went ahead and used, we sat here and said, we're going to use the third of a cent, third of the seven cent infrastructure tax for modernization, we'll use the impact fee for growth. Well, if we do that, then what that says to them is, oh, we're looking at this for growth, we're looking at it for impact fee purposes. So very little, then, of that sales tax dollar would go for this purpose, and thus the minimal amount that it would impact, a potential impact fee.
Is that a proper way to apply the sales tax difference, then?
No, it's not.
I mean, let's say you did it all toward new construction, the sales tax. What is the difference in the impact fee, then?
Is that where I'm hearing the difference?
Harry, or somebody, explain that.
If the district used sales tax for new construction, sales tax credit would definitely increase. But then if they are decreasing ad valorem use because of that, then that will reduce that, and then we just have to calculate the difference. I mean, right now, they are funding it based on what they have in their five-year plan and past five years. They are using...
That's what you predict in the five-year plan, is how you're going to apply your sales tax.
Right, that's right.
A third of it towards new construction. Did I hear that, or?
Modernization, renovation, so that's not capacity right now.
That greatly impacts what that bottom line of that fee is going to be. That's where I'm getting with that, this whole argument.
And I agree with Bill, because that's not sitting well with me, because the third of the penny sales tax that we've been paying was when we remodeled seven of our high schools. And we haven't used that money towards new student stations or anything like that. So to say that if we don't get the sales tax, because for us, I mean, we're talking about taking this, if we can get the sales tax renewed, and we're still discussing that, about using it for renovations, technology, school buses, white fleet, you know, areas that we are desperately and need a funding for. So I don't understand your numbers there.
And it works both ways. I mean, God forbid, we don't get the renewal of the sales tax, given some of the...
Exactly.
...we see on the county, the Board side and the school system side, and the lead of cities, of course, will share in those revenues. It might be wise to, I don't know, I would calculate it for new construction and get the biggest impact out of the variation, just to see. And then you can maybe alter it in another study, once it's in place, see how you've applied the sales tax, new sales tax revenues.
I'd like to make a couple of quick comments. Number one is that we have very few school systems that can take the sales tax and put it on capital. Most of them are so far behind on reconstruction, air conditioning, that it's not uncommon at all for them to pass the sales tax and not put a penny towards capital. So I'm not sure, I quite understand the question about if the impact fee is paid for capital and the sales tax basically take care of what you built last 30 years.
No, that's not what I was saying. The impact fees we have been using for only new student stations.
Right.
The sales tax money we were using for renovations, fixing those roofs and things like that. So no, here you're saying that there would be a difference of, what, $66 if the sales tax didn't pass? And I need help in that, in understanding that, because that $66 right now is not going towards maintenance.
New student stations.
Yeah, well, it was going through to new student stations, but not for any of the maintenance needs.
We've got this confused.
Yeah, two comments, I guess, in terms of moving forward. One is that if you decide to pass the sales tax and put it on capital and not do your maintenance, the fee will come down a little bit. Probably in the next 10 years, 90 percent of your sales tax revenue come from existing people. So when we give the development community a credit for a significant sales tax credit, the fee's not going to come down as much as most of you are thinking it is, because the money doesn't come from new development.
Right.
It comes from existing people. So if you want us to run a scenario, taking like 100 percent of the sales tax and putting on capital, this fee's going to come down a small amount. But the only way to get the fee down, by taking the sales tax and putting on capital, is just discount the fees and saying, I'm going to use the sales tax, and I'm just going to buy down the impact of the development community. So I just want to be, I want to warn you that even if you decide for us to run a scenario, passing a sales tax for capital, the development community doesn't get a lot of credit for it, because that sales tax, most of it is not, if you think about it, if you grow 10 percent in the next 10 years, 90 percent of that revenue doesn't come from the new development. So I just wanted to make two comments. One is, most of our school boards are having to spend the sales tax on maintenance, and so there's almost no credit unless there's debt. And the second is, even if we run a sales tax scenario, it's not going to reduce the fee, it's going to reduce it some, maybe 10 or 15 percent. But unless you just say, I want to pass the sales tax but pay for growth, unless you make that policy decision, that credit isn't going to reduce this fee out dramatically.
I would just think that in these two, with impact fee and without, that those numbers would be further apart than they are.
The sales tax?
Yes.
The main reason is because you're not proposing spending any of it on new expansion. If you don't spend any sales tax on expansion, the credit's zero.
Okay.
And that was the question. That's why, that's why I asked the question. I mean, it should be a larger difference in the two. But somebody grabbed a number out of the air, and I think, this gentleman here said a third of the money would be used for expansion. Did I hear that?
No, I don't think it's anywhere near.
No. Right.
Yeah, it's a very small percentage, it's not a third. But again, I'll warn you that even if you took half of it and decided to go for expansion, the credit we calculate to new development is the money that new development generates, not everybody.
Right.
And so we do have clients that will go out and pass the sales tax to buy down the cost of development and let new people pay for it. I mean, that's a different issue than passing a sales tax and then giving the development community credit. I just want to warn you that if you ask us from that scenario... I just want to warn you that if you ask us for that scenario, I know he doesn't feel comfortable with that new development pays a lot of sales tax that becomes available for capacity, but most of future taxes come from existing people, not from this credit. So, this credit's by law, it's fair, we need to give it. So, again, it's up to you if you want us to run a scenario, reducing your maintenance funds and increasing the capital and sales tax, increase that credit.
It's just the opposite for me.
Okay, so then it would go to zero.
Okay.
Basically. But the only way you get that fee down, which he'd like to see, is for you to tell us not only to pass the sales tax and give the developer credit for it, but to also take it and just buy the fee down.
No, we're not giving it credit.
That wasn't no part of the...
I wasn't trying to put words in your mouth, I'm just kind of warning you that if you, if that, if you, if that request is done, I just don't want anybody to be in shock that if we take half your sales tax, this fee's not going to go down very much, even, even though you're passing that sales tax.
Okay. Commissioner Campbell?
An observation from the standpoint of using sales tax money to help bring down the impact fee cost. There is a sense in the community that it's unfair, that impact fees only apply to new development when new families do come to Lake County and they buy existing homes, and then they basically, they don't have to pay an impact fee. And so, I think that using sales tax money for some of your new construction needs is a fair way to balance that out some, so that your new families that are moving to Lake County, that are buying an existing home and aren't paying an impact fee, some of their sales tax money will help go towards new construction needs. So, I think from a perception standpoint and from a fairness standpoint, that it's good policy to use more of the sales tax than what you've programmed into this formula to help with those new construction needs. I think it goes to the fairness question. I mean, as you're seeing by the presentation, that when you take away other sources, then the impact fee goes up. If you put more of the sales tax into the formula, the impact fee comes down, and that's where I think that you get a fairer impact fee. Otherwise, then you put us in a position where we feel like we have to discount it because it's just not right, it's just not fair, that only people building a new home get hit with an impact fee while other new families are coming to Lake County.
Well, I think in the, for the next number of years in the foreseeable future, because of our bus fleet, our white fleet, our maintenance needs, I mean, that eleven million dollars a year that we're getting from the third of the penny sales tax, it doesn't go that far. I mean, just to replace necessary things that we have now will not even go to touch, you know, the, the new construction and the impact fees. I mean, we have been, you know, for years now with no money, and our white fleet is, you know, well, it, it's a disgrace, it really is. When I see that the counties and the cities can buy vehicles every five years, we haven't bought vehicles in many, many years. So, I know where you're coming from, but we have so many needs that have been pushed aside and pushed aside and pushed aside, that we, we've got to have additional dollars than what this would even bring.
But, but also, I also want to say this, that in 2017, a large portion of the thirty million dollars a year we're spending in debt will go away, and then we can, then begin to use those resources as we move forward. The key right now is that, that we come up with a number that is equitable and fair. I have a question about now how you came up with your formula. Do you include the additional tax revenue, ad valorem dollars, that, that agricultural piece of property, that when a home is built on it, that it then is generating more tax dollars? And where is that in this formula?
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what we've done for the schools, which is kind of interesting. At one time, we used to give a new home the ad valorem credit, but, but commercial people pay the tax. So, we've moved to taking all the revenues that you collect from anybody and credit it per student.
Good, okay.
And so, it's really, it's very legal and extremely conservative, because the new home is not generating that money, commercial people are, vacant property is, and this credit is every penny we could give per student, per home. And so, the answer is yes, the credit is lucrative in terms of trying to recognize the revenue and, and reducing the fee and making sure you're not overcharging. And so, we're giving every credit that, that a new student moving in generates, even if it's coming through commercial property or vacant property, it doesn't matter, it's any revenue that a new student moves in, and we tie that to a home, and then we take the ad valorem, and we took the new value of home, not the average. So, we're giving that home the first five or ten years, which is above average, we're giving that full credit for the, for that, that, that relationship of those values. So, we've tried to do everything we can to be sure if we make any error with the credit, we're overestimating the credit, and you still see it's, it doesn't reduce the fee significantly, because it's just, you're not spending a lot of tax money on, on, on new, new capacity.
The other is, when you, when you baseline your construction cost, that, and I noticed that a lot of those comparisons are two or three years old, and, and construction costs, even on Eustis Heights, went up like thirty percent during the process. So, where, is there an actuary, or is, I mean, when you're, when you're, or are you using just hard numbers that probably aren't applicable today?
We looked at any school constructions, I think, all the way through 2014, statewide, other jurisdictions, and relied more on that than your local data, because your last couple of schools were in 2010, 2009, so they were a little outdated. And we talked to...
We just finished one.
No, that was a remodel, that's not the...
Oh, that didn't count?
It's not a new school.
I'll make another...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's okay, let me make another comment. We track costs for every type of public facility for the last fifteen years, and I can tell you, in '02 and '03, calls were unreasonable, they went up and peaked at '08. Our, our taxes and our wages weren't going up and costs were going up, people were spending money they didn't have. But we've tracked these costs for like fifteen years, we've seen them go up, we've seen them peak, we've seen them come back down. So, when she said we looked at the cost, we didn't just look at your costs and statewide costs and everything that's been built, we've been looking at the whole trend and saying, is this number now reasonable projected calls for the next four or five years? And for the first time in about five years, the answer is yes.
Okay.
It's stabilized, it's went up, it's come back down, it's peaking back up, but I, we don't think it's going to do anything like it did before. And so, we've looked at, at long-term trends, short-term trends, year bids, statewide bids, and we really think that if anybody's got an idea of what it's going to cost to build a school in the next four or five years, we do. And that's what we've used in the study.
Does that answer your question? Okay. The two new people down there, Stephanie?
My question, I know you've mentioned that we have thirty million dollars in debt relief coming up.
Not fully thirty, it's about twenty million.
We have that projected in our five-year capital plan. I mean, it rolls right into projects that we have coming up, correct?
Yeah, correct, yeah. We show it dropping in those years, in those years, we show it dropping, and we're still...
It goes right into the next need that we have.
Yes.
Right.
No, we are still playing catch-up.
Right, right.
We're doing pretty good for catch-up, though. This board's been really good about that. Mark?
Yeah, I think the one thing I struggle with still in understanding these numbers are the, where the construction costs do still feel low to me. As I look back at the two new schools that we have listed here, Sorrento Elementary, our cost per foot was a hundred and seventy dollars, but we're suggesting one fifty-five is the average, and that was, that was five years ago. So, already, at that point, it was above the average, and then Lake Manyola High School was just six dollars under the average that we've got there as well.
Five years ago was...
You're in the middle of the boom.
Yeah. Five years ago was still the last parts of the boom, and then also, the sample size is very small, you have one school, each school has their own unique situations that affect the cost. So, we looked at also what you are insuring for, and we talked to the facilities department, and then we looked at, again, statewide trends to make sure that we can back up the results. Like typically, your high schools cost more, in that example, your elementary school is costing more. It's just, you know, it's just only two schools, so we didn't a hundred percent rely on those.
Well, you're absolutely right, and that's where I struggle on the following page, where it breaks down the average on high schools, where the weighted average of high schools was a hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Yeah.
And, but we're not budgeting that much.
Right, when you, that's like all the jurisdictions, but when we look at your insurance values and we look at, talk to your facilities, we did not think that you will hit that average necessarily, you'll be on the little lower side, just for the construction component. Now, we add architectural and all that on top of it, so...
Why would the elementary and middle schools be more in line, but the high school is just way off?
It's just, yeah, it's just the one bid that was lower than the average of everybody. Your one bid for high school, I think, was a hundred and sixty, is that right?
All right, well, no, I was, I was looking at the, the construction cost for the other Florida jurisdictions and high schools.
Right, like, so your, your one last school that was built in 2010 was about one sixty.
Right.
So, since then, if anything, we saw some costs coming down some, and then when we look at your insurance values and so on, too, we couldn't support going all the way to a hundred and eighty. Let's see, let me see.
Yeah, one bid in, one bid in 2010, just not a good thing to look at?
I, I understand that, and so that's where I understand, looking at all the other jurisdictions here, but...
We've probably got, we've probably working with seven school systems right now, looking at their bids, and again, that fifteen-year period, and what we're finding is that the bids from four or five years ago have come down in general, and they're leveling off, and these, if anything, these, we're going to be maybe low by five or ten percent, but we're just not going to take, you know, one of, one of your, your numbers. We've got counties, their, their income and wages are higher than yours, their, you know, their index numbers are higher than yours, and they're billing schools for a little bit more than these numbers, and, and so, this, this isn't just taking that one bid, this is really looking at a substantial amount of information. And again, it's, it's an estimate of what you, what are you going to spend if you build schools in the next five to seven years? We really think these are real reasonable numbers. To be honest, we have seen numbers that student station costs maybe as low as twenty-seven, and we've seen up to thirty-five per student, thirty-five thousand. But when we hit that thirty-two, thirty-five, it's sustainability, it's green buildings, it's unique costs, the school's going to last for a hundred years, they got reasons that these schools are extremely expensive. So, when we're looking at our numbers in our database, we try to look at your prototype, your design, you know, the area you're building in, and a time period, and we think these numbers are, are very reasonable in terms of looking at all that information.
He's being nice, we discount, we should call your costs, we just take them off.
But is, behind the data that's been presented, is there the science, the formulas that you use to give the credits to come up with the number that you came up with? As a comparison, bringing all of the revenue sources that you, that you reviewed those, and that's where, I guess, this credit came from, right?
Credit looks at how you funded any expansion projects over the past five years and how you propose it in the next five years, and then also recognizes any expansion-related debt service. So, any, any, I mean, we look at all revenue sources that are used to fund expansion projects.
And did you do that comparison against other counties?
Yes.
And is that available?
We can get to that, yeah, absolutely.
That's all.
Yeah.
Okay. You have another question, Bill?
Yeah, maybe, I just need, maybe I'm not seeing something right. Page nine, the school facilities cost per student station, the land cost per net square foot figure?
Square foot.
Is that...
Square foot.
Am I, am I reading that right?
Yeah.
What is the raw land cost? I mean, am I, that's not raw land cost, is it?
We can't be paying fourteen dollars per acre.
Well, that's six hundred and some thousand an acre, so we're...
Okay, let her answer, go ahead.
Estimate was seventy-five thousand per acre.
Seventy-five thousand an acre, you're considering the cost for land.
Right, and that is the building square footage, yeah.
Okay.
That's all. That number kind of needed clarification.
Okay, anyone else have a question or comment?
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
On page, on page five, under Lake County Enrollment, I want to question these numbers.
You're on the study itself?
I'm on, yeah, I'm on the study itself, page five, Lake County Enrollment. It says that for 2014, 15, thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-four students. Now, I know we had over forty-one thousand, so I'm not sure where those numbers came from. And then when I heard that you were not including the charter school students, we have two charter schools that have just sadly closed their doors, which means that there's almost four hundred students or four hundred and fifty students, I'm not exactly sure what it is, but it's between four and five hundred students that will be coming back in to our regular schools. So, when you're looking at fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, those numbers do not look right to me.
Right, they wouldn't... These numbers did not anticipate that those charter schools that you referenced would close, and therefore, those numbers would, would not be in this.
Well, since this is a draft, can we go back and update those numbers?
We can.
I mean, I, I mean, I don't want people to say, oh, you only have forty thousand students, when we know we, you know, have well more than that.
Well, and, and to, to your point, even taking, not even talking about the charter schools that just closed, these numbers also aren't the system-wide numbers that we report, because when we report system-wide numbers, we are reporting then, well, depending on the question asked, when we report a system-wide number, we usually report everything that reports through the district, which would include all charter schools, and so that number would be closer to the forty-one thousand. This number is, including the, yeah...
All the schools in the A1, yeah.
Right, it's, it's the ones on the table A1, which are those, which are our facilities...
The forty-three schools.
Right, in our facilities, but also removing the Lake Hills, Lake Tech, and Lee Opportunity.
But when we're out talking, and I agree with Roseanne, I'm always saying, we've got forty-one thousand plus, and then this is saying thirty-nine.
Well, and I think it goes back to my earlier question. Where's Manyola Charter and Mascot Charter? Are they factored into these numbers, or are they not?
They are. Anything that's in our building are.
There's a conversion.
But there are things that wouldn't be, for example, would be Lake Virtual, they're not in, those numbers aren't in here.
Still are.
Anything that's like the, any of the special programs that aren't necessarily meeting in our facilities, but we have a program, they're not in here, because remember, the purpose of this is to look at facilities, the cost of facilities, and then justify an impact fee. So, to, for us to look at these numbers and then try and equate that to our enrollment number, it's really two different things.
But there is a contingent liability, just like Roseanne just said, when you had two charters close, we have to absorb those children, so there is a liability component to those charter schools being out there.
Oh, there's always the liability, but that's the way the state has us play the game.
But it seems like it should be expressed, though, in available student stations.
Well, in terms... In terms of those two charters that have closed, in the enrollment projections, we can now roll those into the future projections, that we can do.
And my other suggestion, I see the notation here about, you know, you're noting that it includes only the students attending traditional schools, but even in the conversation today, you can see there's a, I think that needs to be defined more. I think we need to be specific about saying, this number does not, excludes Lake Hills, Virtual, Lake Technical Center.
I'm confused why we're excluding, quite honestly, why are we, why are we excluding those schools?
Well, my understanding is, like, like, Virtual, they're not in bricks and mortar, so they're...
That one, that one.
We, I, I think the thought process was, the infrastructure that needs to be built on a continuous basis, on a more standard schools should be included in this fee, but if you say, every so often, we'll continue to build those kind of schools as well, we can include them.
Well, how are we on capacity?
I, I agree with you that I don't, I understand what you said in the explanation, but as far as facility-wise, I don't understand why Lake Hills and Lake Tech would not be included, since we do, we do remodel those, you know, we expand those schools. In fact, Lake Hills is, it needs to be on, it isn't right now, but needs to be on, because they are already over capacity, so, you know...
I'm not trying to raise the...
But you know what I'm saying, is that...
We're not trying to raise the impact fee.
But the reality is, if we had to do an addition, if we had to do it in addition to Lake Hills, it's far more expensive per student.
But as far as the non-conversion charter schools, I totally understand that.
Yeah, totally.
You know, one of the things, I have to point this out, and I heard what you said, and I know, I know exactly what you mean, and you're spot on. We talk about Lake Hills, and we say, oh, it's, it's out of capacity. Well, remember, in planning, the way we look at this in planning, some of these schools, in fact, you saw, oh, we have six percent capacity available, and I saw some of you sit there and go, no, we don't, because when we look at just fish capacity and the number of students, we can make those statements as planners. But when we know that when we're running the educational programs that we run, then it's a whole different thing altogether. But yet, to be on that conservative side, we do it this way. So, the point is, is the Lake Hills, in the way we look at the numbers, they would say, oh, no, there's plenty of available capacity. So, while they can include both Lake Hills and Lake Tech, and it's not a problem, what's going to happen is...
You're going to get...
The available capacity is going to undercut the fact that you're including them anyway.
Right.
So, you know, it becomes a wash for... so, you know, it becomes a wash for, from the perspective of doing an impact fee, from the perspective of...
But it's transparent and shows the schools.
Right, for the trans, from the transparency side, though, including them is...
And that's why I said, i- if it's a wash, I, I do understand that, but I think it's hard to explain it, because it's not, it's not...
It's a better documentation of your inventory.
I think it just needs to be documented, whichever way.
Is Lake Hills on our debt service?
Lake Hills, um, I'd have to go back and see, um, how we paid for that.
But I bet that's still on our debt service.
Yeah, I think it is.
Something they can check. Um, Commissioner Cadwell, did you have a question or comment?
I just wanted to get the microphone away from you. No, I'm just, two, one thing's absolutely none of my business, on the Lake Tech issue, when you look at that, you're gonna need to count on the revenue side, the direct capital funding that Lake Tech's been, after last year, they got some, and they get, so that's gonna, just make sure you're aware of that, they're getting some direct capital funding.
From the state.
From the legislature side, that needs to be credited back off, but that's none of my business, but I'll just say, two things I had is, I, if I understood you right, even if you wanted to use, more of the sale stacks, um, to buy down the impact fees, you can't do that by your business plan, your five-year plan, or whatever.
That's correct.
And if you did, it wouldn't make that much difference on the bottom line, I'm just making sure.
That's right.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And number two, when you do come to us with this presentation, are you gonna make an ask, then?
I, I would like to.
Okay, I'm just saying, if you make a presentation to us, and the first thing we're gonna say is, "Well, go back and tell us how much it is your ask."
Yeah, we're gonna make a, we're gonna make a decision, we're gonna vote on it.
The, the reality is, is that in a, if this is vetted, and the business community, builders community, I'm assuming, has looked at this, and may have some opinion, that, that, um, the idea that we would, that we, as, as we move into this growth experience, that we would ask for anything less than 100%, and that debt is acceptable, we've already seen what that does to us, so, yes, I think we'll be coming with a recommendation.
You will get a recommendation.
All right, thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any things that you want? Dr. Moxley, we have some things that we did want added in here, the board members have made suggestions, um, when would this come back to us, with a revised?
I, one, I'm going to look to our consultant here on making the changes for a final report. What turnaround time would you need?
We can, assuming we coordinate data, we, we should be able to give you a report back within 10 days or so.
Okay, our next meeting is July the 13th?
Our next meeting would be July the 13th, um, is that July the 13th, and then the 27th of July?
Yes, ma'am.
Those are the two, two board meetings we have.
And the sooner the better for us, so we can make that decision and move it forward to the board.
Are we doing the sort of workshop, or are we doing it as a...
CFAC? Where's your mics?
We'll ask for a recommendation from the CFAC committee as well, so...
Okay.
Plan that into, into the schedule.
Well, we wanna get to the point where we, as a board, have voted on it, so that you have our recommendation, and then you go forward.
So, so...
Do I see fact to wait for your recommendation?
Well, that was gonna be, my question is, if, if this comes back, and you can take action on the 13th?
Right.
Would that then go to the CFAC committee, or it would go to the Board of County Commissioners?
It's to the Board of County Commissioners, and they have their CFAC review in between then, normally what you've done in the past.
Well, isn't it still a draft until y'all have a chance to look at it? I mean, it seems to me that I, I really...
No, we, we adopt whatever we're gonna adopt, then it goes to them. Yeah, they accept the report.
Or not accept it.
Right.
Well, why don't they look at it before we come out with another draft, and if they have any comments, get those, so that we have everything incorporated into one document?
Well, the CFAC committee wasn't scheduled to meet till July 16th, and that meeting was canceled because of this one here, so the question is...
And it wasn't publicized for you to have a quorum?
Well, no, and that wasn't supposed to be done here today anyhow, so my question is, are we able to maybe get that meeting back on for the 16th of July? If we have this on our agenda for the 13th?
Right, and you can meet on the 16th.
And then, from there, can, the presentation can be made to the Board of County Commissioners, based on the, you know, our recommendation, and then CFAC's recommendation.
We can, we can try to do that, it just, we'll have to make sure, of course, we have a quorum, so...
Sure, okay. I still have it available on my calendar, so...
Is there any way we can get it updated with all the changes for our meeting?
Yes, ma'am, we'll make sure you get that.
So their meeting is on the 16th?
16th, so if we approve the final version on the 13th, then we'll make sure it's faxed over to you immediately, or as soon as we get it, bef, we'll send it to you, I mean, we have no problem doing that.
It'll still be a draft form, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, the more time they have.
So as soon as, Mr. Tindall, Ms. Kemp gets it back to us, we'll send it out. It doesn't matter, it gives them something to look at, and then we can let them know what we do on the 13th, I mean, we're open here, we're trying to work this out.
And, the only thing I'm interested in is really seeing that breakout in how you're issuing the credits, because while I was surprised that it actually went down, I also think that probably your methodology is closer to being accurate as, as... Not the credit, the impact fee I'm talking about, the fee amount, no, 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 the credit that going up seems to make sense to me, as I'm processing, by the way, so...
Okay, anything else you need from us, Ms. Kemp, to do what you... Mr. Tindall? We need new batteries.
The fee going down, I think she mentioned to you, is the generation rate, is it, is the huge driving force that went down, uh, I don't think we went and looked at the vacancy rates. What we've seen statewide is the vacancy rates of people default, or whatever, are up, and so the student generation rate seemed a little depressed, and you're gonna have a lot of students move into existing homes that are vacant, and so, most of these fees, in my mind, three or four years from now, you're gonna see these student generation rates trending downward a little bit, as soon as the new homes get built, and the existing homes get full again, you're gonna see the student generation rates back up, but that's, that's kind of the driving factor of a lot of them, and seeing the generation rate trend down a little bit, it's not because, 'cause usually what happens when you get new homes, there's more students in new homes than the average home, uh, so I, that's just one comment, there's no, there's no adjustment factor here at all for your vacancy rates, which, which we, we just don't do.
Mm-hmm.
And so what you may see is the speed went down a little bit, mainly because of generation rate, and my guess is, three to five years from now, you're gonna see the generation rate...
Go back up.
Back up on the average because of the vacancy rates declining.
Well, you have a lot of them right now moving in with their families, too, so they're foreclosed on a house, and now they're in with their parents, um, so, and the market is going more toward town, townhomes and apartments, we've got a whole bunch of those coming in.
And you attributed that, you said in the future years, you're gonna see 90% of our funds come from existing families, not from new...
Right. Okay, anything else from the board? Anything else from your board? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sean. Sir, what did you say, Bill? Thank you, it was a good conversation, thank you very much for being here. Oh, okay. Do we need a school out on 48? Do we need another one? I know where you live.
Thank you, Mr. Tindall.
Thank you very much for being here, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, moving, um, back to 3.02, update on transportation and IT audits. We have Will Davis, we have Creed Wheeler, we have Scott Fender, we have Harris Jacobs. And who's doing it?
I guess I'm the elected...
They're pointing to you in the middle.
I believe so.
And this says Will Davis on it, so, you know, I'm kinda, I'm kinda... Kinda confused here. Will, are you coming up?
It should be in the...
While we're getting set up, Madam Chairman, Dr. Moxley, board members, um, I would normally say it's a pleasure to be here, but my last appearance before you was very exciting.
I forgot all about it.
So, I want to make sure I introduce myself properly, my name is Harris Jacobs, or Jacob Harris, whichever you prefer, I've answered to either my entire life, and I am your Information Services Manager. I assure you, I do not work for Scott. So with those...
That disclaimer, you're, you're okay.
We're ready to go, I think.
Okay.
So...
Okay, um, this, this starts with transportation, who's going to be?
I will be addressing it, and then, uh, I have support all over the place, so, um, the reason I'm involved is, immediately after the board presentation of the trans, local transportation audit, uh, Dr. Wheeler contacted me and said, "Harris, I need you to call Scott Fender, and I need you to see what we can do to help," and that was all he said. I hadn't known what had happened, but I was soon to learn, so I reviewed the transportation audit in graphic detail, uh, probably read it about 12 times, I also met with transportation and his staff, also met with some of the finance folks, and some of my staff, and from this research that I did, about a month's work, um, I determined the best way that IT could help transportation with automation of their existing systems.
That's what we have.
Oh, good, good. I arrived at the conclusion there were three major areas of concern, um, that was fuel, parts, and work orders, and in all three of those, I believe automation could help. We looked at their existing systems to see, uh, if we could integrate those into Skyward. We also looked at, um, external systems, new systems, and then we took a very hard look at Skyward, and what I came back to Scott was, I think we have a proposal that will help. So, let's start with the fuel inventory first, um, basically, you have six locations with two different types of fuel, diesel and unleaded, um, the current situation is that the fuel last year was valued at $3.4 million, the fuel is expensed when it's purchased, okay? It's charged to the transportation budget as an expense, the expense is then moved by journal entry in finance, as it's used by the white fleet, um, there are multiple vehicle types that are fueled, both buses and white fleet, for a total of 645 vehicles, um, most of the reconciliation was manual. So, I made the proposal for Mr. Fender, um, that, after discussion with finance, that we could move the fuel out of expense to an asset, until it is used as an expense. We would be able to eliminate the journal entry that's done by finance, we would been, be able to eliminate the manual preparation by transportation of that journal entry, all these are manual processes, where mistakes can be made, um, we can automate the actual reconciliation process, and it would give transportation a real-time view of their current inventory at all six locations, or in total, at any given second of the day. We would be able to calculate a cost, an average mile per gallon by vehicle, and we would be able to separate those costs by vehicle, whether it be bus or a white fleet. So, how do we get there from this proposal? Well, we created warehouses for the six locations in Skyward, we inventoried the fuel at the month end of April, um, finance created an asset account for that fuel, we did a single journal entry to move the expense of the existing fuel inventory, um, to that asset account, we trained the staff on how to enter the fuel requisitions, we've trained the staff how to receive the fuel as an asset rather than an expense, all these little details had to happen, we are currently working on the reconciliation process to automate that, um, we've also notified the schools and departments that we won't be sending, or transportation won't be sending, a manually-prepared bill each month, it will automatically appear in their Skyward accounting, so if they pull up their budget, the charges are there, as they occur. Next, the second level, our major area of concern was the parts inventory. They have five locations, 15 vehicles, they have non-inventory parts, and they have an issue with supplies versus a part, what is a quart of oil? About a supply or a part?
Supply.
Okay, so there, there is, part of the issue is just the definition of what something is. So, currently...
You asked the question, so how y'all classify them right now?
Currently, it is, uh, classified as a supply, okay? I think it should be inventoried because of the volumes, okay? You're talking about a large amount of oil.
You say supplies aren't inventoried?
No, a supply is a non-inventory item, in other words, um, shop rags, that's a supply, okay? It's used in the consumption on multiple vehicles, it, it's not issued out to work on one vehicle, a rag, that's a supply, a can of WD-40, or a PB blaster, that's a supply, quart of oil is an inventory item.
Yeah, I agree with that, ma'am.
Okay, so, currently is not inventoried, okay, or was not at this time.
But it is in the plan now, is what I hear you saying.
Yes, ma'am, so the parts value at the end of last year was 330,000, roughly, um, with supply cost of 123,000, which means it didn't go through inventory, okay? The net change, because the two systems are not linked together, a single journal entry is made at year-end, they take account of what it was at the beginning of the year, and account at the end of the year, and then they adjust the difference, okay? It was only $9,000 different from beginning to end, however, $700,000 worth of parts flowed through their warehouses, okay? Wasn't on our primary system. They have approximately 2,300 active parts, they have about 670 inactive, or obsolete parts, are valued about 50,000, and we need to come up with a solution to do something with. At the time, the parts manager could purchase, receive, and disperse parts, it was inappropriate segregation of duties, um, parts were also purchased outside of inventory, in other words, a mechanic could go to the parts house, say, "I need this," go put it on the vehicle, it never made its way through inventory, all the things that we need to keep track of.
And these were all part of that audit?
They were a part of the audit.
And, okay, you're just making connections.
And making the connection to, to what was found, and how we're trying to address that concern.
Mr. Mox?
Yes?
Yeah.
Correct.
So, our proposal to transportation was to create a new catalog of items, abandon the existing one, uh, to create multiple warehouses, to take a physical inventory, which was started 5/26, so we could get an accurate beginning balance, um, our proposal was to remove the obsolete items from the catalog, uh, remove the supplies, and develop a surcharge, or add the item to inventory, which in this case... which in this case would be the oil needs to be added, and a freeze, another example. This would provide a real-time view of the current inventory for Scott and his staff, either by separate location or in total. By putting this within Skyward, we would be able to tie the inventory parts to the work order that was causing the item to be issued for the work on that particular vehicle. This would also eliminate the billing process, and it would provide the necessary segregation of duties. So how did we get there? We created the warehouses, we inventoried the parts, we defined the surcharge costs, we trained the staff to enter the parts in the requisition process. Also trained the staff to receive the parts, which is a little different than what they were used to because it was being expensed out as it was received, because the inventory was on a separate system, not on our primary system. So that had to be taken into account. We're still in the process of working on the non-inventory parts. Those are items that the mechanic may pick up at the parts house and put it right on the vehicle. And it would not be an item that we would normally put through the inventory process. Those will be rare. Those are going to draw his attention because of the way we're setting it up. We've also notified the schools that the billing will appear directly through Skyward and not via manual bill that's being emailed to them from Transportation.
Who you send the bill to?
Did data clerks get them done, or the?
The school bookkeepers.
Bookkeepers.
If they have a white fleet.
Could be an apartment, could be IT, for their IT vehicles, could be maintenance, for any work, none of the maintenance vehicles, fuel.
It's billed per school, per department, depending on where the, the vehicle is located.
Okay.
Because we budget, each department budgets our fuel and oil and repair costs. Those are not part of Transportation's cost.
Yeah, it's billed, and that's the way the county does it. But there's one repository where all, where the, you know, we, we don't, we don't say, here's your quantity of fuel. You know, we've got the fuel all in one location under the fuel management system, but we bill it out.
Since I interrupted, I'll go ahead and ask another question real quick. And in my world, a non-inventory is tied to accounts payable. And, okay, is the same, is that the same now with Skyward? Because if that's the case, then a non-inventory item, there's a way that we deal with that.
Correct.
It's an in-out item, but it still should be going through the system.
It does.
But not necessarily create an SKU for it. In other words, it's an in-out, right? Is that the same way you were treating it?
That's exactly true.
Yeah, good.
And it would run through as an expense.
Right.
To Mr. Fender's expense budget.
Right.
Okay, and would go right through the payables process as an expense.
But they're going to be linked together.
But on the work order, when that's turned in as an NIP, that NIP is entered on the work order itself. So we pick up that cost on the work order.
Uh huh. But we're also tracking that inventory. Because what if the technician went and got this part, now it doesn't fit, or whatever, it needs to be returned? Then there needs to be a whole credit.
When he sends in his worksheet with the part that he bought, the part and the sheet is, it's all attached.
Uh huh.
And then when it comes to the part manager, he decides where it's going to go to be charged out. But it doesn't necessarily get entered into inventory. We may not want to keep that SKU in inventory.
You wouldn't, but it's an in-out, in other words, it seems like the same process.
NIP, non-inventory.
The same process has to, I mean, you can't like all of a sudden have these two separate procedures, really. It's one in the same, right?
Correct.
Yeah, welcome to the 21st century.
And I will tell you, one of the, well, the new parts manager that Mr. Fender has hired, he, he is really sharp, give him a lot of credit. He came to us from NAPA, I believe, in one of their distribution centers. And I will tell you that he doesn't want to see those NIPs. Okay? If, if a part that is non-inventory is going to be put on a vehicle, he should be taking care of it, not the mechanic out there in the field, which lends control to knowing what those NIPs are.
It lends control, but is it going to slow down the process of getting that part and getting it on the vehicle and getting the vehicle on the road?
I don't think so.
If it does, we need to know, because I have a problem with that slowing it down.
Yeah, and, and also that you could end up a NIP, which I had to figure out in my head what you were talking about, non-inventory part.
I'm sorry.
Afternoon world.
So I got it, but.
Figured it out.
But, but you could end up, if every item becomes a SKU, you could end up with 10,000 listed items that you don't need to, by the way.
That's correct.
So.
Yep.
So while we want to track, we don't want to.
We don't slow down, too.
We don't slow down. And the only thing I could think of would be those items that may carry some warranty that you may want so, so that ultimately you're tracking the history of that part, should it come back and be, have to be replaced. Does that make sense?
It does. And Skyward does have that capability.
Yeah, I mean, so in that case, anything that has a warranty that you're tracking a serial number would become a SKU because you have to keep the history of it. But I have, me personally, I don't have a problem with non-inventory parts not creating a SKU every single time because suddenly you can burden yourself with a lot of items that have no inventory.
Right.
That's why they have such a, had a, such a large inventory. Everything was getting put on there.
But it, but the large inventory, the 330,000 they have in inventory.
The quantity of parts, 23.
23,000 doesn't seem like that many to me. 2355, I think it was.
Well, in comparison to some of our other warehouses, that's three times the volume.
And the obsolete parts, the $48,000, is that because of older vehicles, or we just weren't managing the inventory?
I would guess that, well, they are, it is all old inventory. It's all old. So what we're doing is we're segregating that so that we can go through procurement and determine what's the best way to disposition it, whether it be through auction.
Can you give me an example of what that might be?
Oh, yes, it could be, it could be something from a 1993 bus that, you know, wiper assembly or something, it's just, you know, those types of things.
And that we don't have.
We don't have that bus anymore.
And we don't have the bus.
That's what, that's what. That if we, because we have an old fleet.
Right.
And it seems like maybe some old parts could be matched to it.
And the mindset, the mindset is they don't want to let anything go.
Because you might need it down the road.
We may need it down the road, but those are the things that really just need to go.
Literally.
Well, and one of the issues you have to be concerned about, too, and this, this particularly comes up in maintenance when, you know, and you were talking about warranties. So when we buy the part and put it on the shelf, the date of the warranty starts then.
Bingo.
That part may not get used for nine months, and then it may be a one-year warranty part, and then, oops.
Your warranty's out.
Not in four months, but we already had it nine of the 12. And so, you know, that was one of Tom's issues about having a means for us to do what we can about the just-in-time sort of delivery. So if we, if we have those that aren't system-critical type things that we can, plus we don't have to have a lot of inventory on hand as well, but those, those things which carry a warranty are a little more critical in that sense that we don't want to. And, and that's why watching this inventory and knowing how quickly it's moving and how to move the parts through the system is very, very important.
And it's a mindset change, honestly, especially for the mechanics that are out on the road.
Oh, yeah.
Because their, their mindset is if I have to run and pick up this belt, well, I might as well pick up two. Well, if it's a pass-through piece, that's fine, because it's the one we're going to charge right out. It's going to be attached to the vehicle and go. But now you've got a second piece, and if you're going to keep, you have to create a part number for it. So we have to change just the way they think when they're going in there. You buy exactly what you need when you need it. Anything else, we want to run through the parts house and then through our parts manager. If they buy it, it should be being attached to a vehicle.
Let me just say this, that, that the biggest mistake you can do is have a whole bunch of people out in the field buying things.
Right.
So I would bring that internally, but we also need to understand that we can't cause a delay in getting that part. You know what I'm saying? Because there's a lot of other things that happen with the, with the receiving and the billing and all that kind of stuff that can go sideways if you have everybody out there buying. So my advocacy for y'all would be that the parts fellow is, is that conduit.
Yes.
That they communicate with, and then, I mean, I'm just telling you.
That's why he was hired.
And he's, I think he's the right guy to do that.
I'm sorry to interrupt y'all.
No, that's quite right. Lastly, the work.
See how polite I'm being to you?
Getting exciting again. The actual work order process, there are multiple types of work orders. Basically, there's a scheduled maintenance work order, and there's an on-demand work order. And then within those two groups, we need to separate them out by white fleet and bus. So essentially, we wind up with four types of work orders. And what we mean by a maintenance work order is every 29 days by state statute, we have to do a certified inspector's inspection of a bus, which is a walk-through, walk-around, test everything on the bus. I think actually they, in Lake County, we do it every 25 days. That's in addition to the bus driver's walk-around, where they do a single-page check sheet of anything that's not working. So that's a difference where our distinction we're trying to make here is a maintenance is something that's a scheduled inspection that requires repair. A re, a on-demand work order is that type that, hey, Scott, one of our vans in IT is broke down on the side of the road. Can you get somebody out to pick it up and fix it? That's an on-demand. So that's our distinction that we tried to make here. Currently, the work orders are after the fact. The work's done and the work ticket is filled out at the time it's completed. The amount of labor, the parts, the oil that we've used, everything about that work that was done is created by the mechanic that's doing the work. He attaches that maintenance sheet or that on-demand ticket that the bus driver created or the ticket that came in from the IT van that's broke down. They're used to record the work that's done. They were requiring that those work orders then be hand-typed. Everything on it was hand-typed into their existing work order system. That provided very limited reporting within their old system. However, it was used for billing the departments like IT. However, there were no labor costs or supplies that were billed for the white fleet in that process. So our work order proposal was to create the four types of work orders, use the work order to track the cost by vehicle, eliminate the retyping of handwritten work orders, eliminate the billing process that had to be prepared by Transportation, and possibly move to manage before-the-fact work order instead of after-the-fact. That's our next evolution. Right now, we're going to use Skyward to do it as an after-the-fact, and I'll explain a little bit more detail here in just a sec. I'm able to tie the employees' EIN from our HR system to get the labor per hour cost on each employee that is one of Scott's mechanics. So that gives us the ability to provide a management cost reporting by that vehicle or department. Because IT may have 12 vehicles, what's the total cost for IT? That was our proposal. So how we got there was we created the four work order types. We added the employees so that they could create work orders that are located in Scott's office. We trained the staff to enter those, designating the work order. And then how to take that handwritten work order and scan it directly into Skyward, tied to the work order number, thus eliminating all that hand typing. Because the original document is right there in your face when you pull up the work order. We trained the staff on how to enter the EINs to get, capture the labor cost. And again, we're working on moving to before-the-fact process. That's going to take a lot of work to get there, some technology hardware-wise to get there. We have trained the staff on assigning and printing. We've also notified the schools that will be doing the, the labor billing and those types of things through the work order process on Skyward. So for the total project, to summarize, we've established documentation for the folks doing the work. We've started creating the reports that they require. We have basically started the implementation. We will review our implementation in July to see what's not working and what is. And then we will do our gap process or the study that we go back and look at where we missed the mark. What are we missing that we need to include in this process? Hopefully, that's not too big. Hopefully, we've got everything. Attached also are two sample reports, very simple reports. One is a fuel report, shows by bus number, the odometer readings, the miles traveled, the miles per gallon, quantity of the fuel, all the data about that fill-up.
Yes.
The second and last slide here is a work order report. Shows by bus and date and mechanic that worked on that vehicle, the hours and time worked, tied to the HR system to pull their hourly rate in, to give us an accurate accounting of labor costs. So that ends our presentation, I believe, and we're open for questions.
What?
Can I add something?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say how much I appreciate, and I really, really do appreciate this. You know, as soon as that Mr. Mox report came out earlier in the year, you know, we immediately called in the existing vendor for our, our maintenance software, had several visits, really didn't get anywhere or see much improvement in the process. We, we then went out to some outside vendors, and then when they called me up and asked to meet and sat down, I just, it was such, it was so smooth, it was so nice. Harris was great, he came in, he sat down with my staff. He basically asked some question after question after question. No question was too dumb, you know, I mean, no question, he, he was great with them. Took a lot of time, and, and he's just, the whole process has been really nice. And I think when we're done, and we're almost there, but I think when we're done, we're going to have a really nice product here. But, but I really appreciate both Dr. Will and Harris for what they've done because it's, it's really been nice, and the people are feeling really good about it in the department.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. Any comments, questions?
All is good.
Yes, this is great.
There are two, two, two primary, or three primary items of the seven that, that Mr. Mox brought up in December back when he made the presentation to you. SOPs, Scott is currently wearing, what we've done is we've taken Escambia County, which has probably the most comprehensive SOP for transportation in the entire state. And we're going, he's got his staff going through that, we're making changes and edits and looking at how we can refine those. The other issue is basically safety. And it's one of the things he's been working with Lauren Ritter and her staff, having safety meetings and. You know, because one of the big issues in Tom's report was safety.
Right.
And so, so, so we are looking at all seven items as part of Mr. Mox's report and what we're working towards is, and these kind of represent four or five of those major items which are critical for us to be able to go to the next step, which is part of our WebCompass software, to be able to determine cost of operation, you know, because one of the things that we, we, we've never have been able to do with the way the system has been set up is understanding, you know, what is the real cost.
Right.
For each individual vehicle. And I know we, Mike Cor and I have been working with coming up, the military uses a system in order to determine at what point do the, do the maintenance costs exceed the useful life of the product so that, so that we have a non-subjective way in order to come back to you and say, because we know we have newer buses that actually require more maintenance than older buses. And so what we want to do is we want to come to you in a position where we know what those costs are and what vehicles need to be prioritized in such a way to make the best decisions. And this will be a great tool for us to do that.
Part of that safety also was getting those containers where that we could take all that stuff that's just been thrown in those warehouses or in the, in the maintenance areas and put those in a storage area. or in the, in the maintenance areas and put those in a storage area where it was safe. And we're still moving forward with that?
Still moving forward with that. We have the, Springstead Engineering is actually doing the design.
Okay.
Working with Mark Cook, who is, I believe, already ordered the.
Containers?
Well, the containers have been ordered.
Have they? Okay, great.
And so we're just working on the storage buildings and getting that set up and maybe working with Mike Corne's staff to figure out how we can put water and electric and some other things and possibly some storage.
Okay, and Mark Cook is the one doing the things for our mechanics to be under, out of the weather? Okay, thank you. All right.
And we did make arrangements at the Eustace lot to move under the.
Existing pavilion.
Existing pavilion.
Are we speaking about those, that they're just under cylinder design then? These with Mark Cook? Or they already have been designed and are ready to build them?
Sheds have been designed, but in order to meet the wind.
You have to have the concrete slabs?
You have to get a structural engineer in order to design the.
For the slide, the slab.
To set the structure on, and so Springstead's now making that design. And as soon as he gets finished, we'll be moving forward here in the next couple of weeks.
And are troops involved in, in how these lay out and what they need as far as electrical or gas or air, whatever?
Well, that's the next step. As soon as we get the general placement, then we'll be working with Scott's staff to talk about those issues and actually providing some sort of storage underneath these units where they can push their toolkit, their tools and things into lock them up for the night so that it's not just going to be a carport, it'll have, have some place that that could happen.
And utilities, where they need to be and that kind of thing? Very good. Good stuff.
What was the third thing? You said there was three. SOP, safety?
Operations, SOPs and safety were the two. Fleet management and fleet maintenance were kind of incorporated in the work order management system. And as, you know, as Harrison, I've talked about on many times, you know, I'm all ready, I'm all ready to run when he's just still trying to walk. Because I really think that we should be looking at automating this process as much as possible because I know some of the, some of the issues that we've had in the past is the fact that, you know, work orders are stacking up with the clerk, you know, doing their best to try to catch up and keep things and it's kind of a timeliness deal. But we realize we've got to, you know, we've got to walk.
You're going to get the base set and then move forward?
That as soon as we get the process going and we're comfortable with the elements and how we're going to interact with the staff, because there's a lot of training that's going to be involved with the mechanics.
And Lauren DeRitter, along the same lines, Lauren has been great and Randy Boat. They've been to every one of our, our safety meetings that we had. And they're certainly not required to, but they do show up to everyone and we've got some good stuff.
So everybody's working together.
And are we feeling, are we feeling good about our GPS routing and all that is online and how we're going to account for students, all that? You, we did.
The GPS side of it is working very well. And it, and it's been very helpful for us. We're still having, we're still working through some problems with the routing side of it.
Yeah, WebCom, US Computing was just purchased by Seon. Seon was the huge, a huge fleet management GPS.
That's who does our cameras.
They, they do a lot of, not only school, but they do a lot of fleet management too. So they just purchased US Computing and, and, you know, we're working through transitions. There are a few, a few minor things. They have a, they have a conference in South Carolina here in a couple of weeks. And usually what they do is they try to have all the changes incorporated for that conference. So we'll see a lot of changes in just.
Y'all are going up there?
We have two, we have two individuals that are going up.
Okay. Anybody on that end have any comments? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one other presentation. And I'm going to ask Kathleen Jarvis to please come forward. And I know we have a representative from Lake Sumter State. Please come up. And I'm going to have you say your last name for us.
It is Thomassevich.
Thank you very much. I know you've been patiently waiting in the audience, so welcome. We're glad you're here. And welcome on joining this project.
All these if you want to.
We wanted to give you an update on the Health Sciences Collegiate Academy. And Kathleen Jarvis has been our direct lead on this. This has been a really good model because we've been able to, we've actually set up this governance structure and everybody is involved in it in some shape or form. We have work teams from all the entities coming together. It's very exciting work and we have 130 students ready to go. In fact, I gave a report to the Board of Directors at the Chamber, South Lake Chamber this morning, they had asked about it. And so I'll let you go.
Good afternoon, everyone. Madam Chair Stivender, Vice Chair Mathias, School Board Members, and Dr. Moxley. I am honored this afternoon, but very excited to bring you the update on the Health Sciences Collegiate Academy. As Dr. Moxley mentioned, we've, we have been working on this initiative for months. And so we're excited to bring you the updates this afternoon. Just a quick overview of some of the things that we're going to discuss this afternoon. From various stakeholders' perspectives, we're going to share with you from a student perspective, some of the pieces that the students have had opportunity to participate in thus far. Also, some of the things that we've done for parents, things that we've done for teachers, give you an update on some curriculum development, and also the collaboration that Ryan Thomassevich and I have been working on together. So it's really exciting. There's Tom. Okay. So we want to welcome Dr. Thomassevich to not only Lake County, but also to this wonderful initiative. It is really neat that he's joining us from Illinois. He actually was professor there for 12 years and he also received his doctorate there as well. But what's really exciting about his work is that he does have expertise on transitioning students from the high school to the college with a very high success rate. And he has expertise in strengths-based leadership. So I know we spent a lot of work on that in our district. So it's really nice to have him join our team. And he also has the expertise in a lot of the areas that are important to us as well. So welcome, Ryan.
Good Facebook picture.
As you can see, Ryan and I have been spending a lot of time together. We've actually established weekly meetings to ensure that there is seamless communication between Lake County Schools and also Lake Sumter State College. Additionally, we work together to make sure that there's seamless collaboration to our other stakeholders such as South Lake Hospital, the University of Central Florida, and also Mountain Verde Academy. So during our monthly, our weekly meetings, we spend some time really looking at some critical thinking. We do a lot of problem solving and also we look at action planning to really make sure that we're putting things in place, that we're meeting deadlines and everything is happening very well with this initiative. So we've been spending a lot of time together. So the first stakeholder that we wanted to give you an update on is with our students. Wanted to provide the board an update on the student enrollment breakdown and how many students we have in each of our schools as well as Mountain Verde Academy. So as you can see, currently, East Ridge High School, we have 45 students that are projected to be enrolled in the academy this fall, as well as 31 students at Lake Mineola High. At South Lake, we have 51 students. And Mountain Verde, we currently have three. We're hoping and expecting to have more students. But as you can see, that makes up our 130-student projection for the fall. And I know when we started this initiative, we were looking at approximately 125. So we are about five students over where we projected, so we'll celebrate that.
And these are students that have already applied?
They have and been, been through the whole process.
Yes, and that's a great segue, Mr. Mathias. So how did our students get into the program? Well, one of the pieces that students had to actually participate in is a student interview. And they had people from various institutions that were a part of that process. So we had faculty from Lake Sumter State College as well as faculty from Lake County Schools that represented from curriculum and instruction, teaching and learning, as well as professional development and leadership. Also, all three high schools participated in the interview process as well. And we even had our professional workers from South Lake Hospital that were all a part of the process. As you can see, the interviews lasted about four days. So we had students come in in various waves so that they could be interviewed and really just discuss with the panel why they want to be a part of this initiative. Because we want to make sure that students are really interested and want to be involved in the initiative. So these stakeholders took time out of their day to do the face-to-face interviews, which was really neat for the students.
Do you know about how many students applied?
Actually, all the students that applied have actually been accepted into the Health Sciences Collegiate Academy for this round.
There was actually two extra students who applied.
Still not, is it on? Great. So there were actually one student that we chose not to move forward from the school district based on current grades and where they were going. So they were technically not eligible, but all the other students were added.
Thank you. And so this fall, we have a student orientation plan for our students on August 28th. And the students will spend an entire day with not only their teachers from the high school and some of their core courses, as well as the executive internship, which I'll tell you about. But we'll also have faculty from Lake Sumter State College so that they can get to meet some of those professors, as well as medical professionals from the hospital. So they will get to meet individuals that are actually in the career that they are interested in. So we have that slated for August 28th. And some of the work that Ryan and I will be doing this summer is planning to make sure that this event is a success for our students. So we do have that slated for the 28th of April, I mean, of August. So another very important stakeholder in this process are the parents, making sure that they're informed, they're aware, and they can add value to the process as well. So we've had various parent information sessions. And actually, the state college took the lead on organizing and implementing the parent nights. And we had our principals, as well as myself and other teachers in the audience for support. But Dr. Gary Sly did an awesome job with pulling the parent information sessions together, answering lots of questions. And they even had one on March 30th, which was spring break for us, but we still had parents show up, so that was neat. I wasn't there, I was on a cruise, but many of our parents were in attendance that evening. So we have parent sessions for them as well. Now to the really neat part about the executive intern, about the Health Sciences Collegiate Academy is the executive internship course. This course is specifically unique to the Health Sciences Collegiate Academy because it offers the students some direct understanding of what these professional jobs and careers are actually about. So they will have discussions within the course with some teachers that were selected by their principals at the school around what are some of the criterias for having these health-related careers? Also, what type of job-related skills will I have to have? And students will also be able to go on. Just lost my train of thought. Field trip, thank you, Ryan. Field trips and also have an opportunity to job shadow with health professionals. So this course, we actually adopted from the Florida Department of Education. It is a part of our course guide. And we are actually having teachers come in to design what this executive internship course will look like. And we have some of those dates to share with you when the teachers have gotten together and also some future dates for when they will get together to plan this course. So this is really interesting because this is the first time that we would have done something like this in our district. And our teachers get to design what this great experience will be like for our students. So a connection to the South Lake Hospital is that our students will actually be able to interact with healthcare professionals. So the red arrow that you see there that says executive internship course really has a direct connection to South Lake Hospital and some of the internship opportunities that our students will have. So as we bring our teachers in, we're beginning with the end in mind and thinking about the opportunities that students will have and ensuring that they consider some of these pieces as they're designing the course. So what you see in front of you are the various career tracks that students can pick from, that they would like to learn more about. And then our partners at the hospital will help make these a reality for our students. So now our teachers, what have we done for our teachers in this process? Well, we know that teachers getting together and collaborating is so very important because we're putting all of our best thinking into putting together a very solid product. So we've had ongoing professional learning communities for our teachers. Our first one actually was June 2nd, where we had it down at Lake Sumter State College. And we actually had participants from the hospital there, our teachers, Lake Sumter staff. And so we were all in the room. We had a great afternoon really talking and thinking about what our students need to know and be able to do to be successful. We also brought the teachers back on the 10th that, that are going to teach the executive internship course. And they pretty much got a whole year pretty mapped out with regards to a skeleton. And then we're bringing them back in for three days of writing in August to really start to put the specific details together. But they spent a really good time brainstorming and really thinking about, you know, the end in mind, where do we want our students to be and started to put some milestones in place. So as you can see, we've had articulation, vertical articulation between our school, the state college, and also the hospital. And we utilize the PLC and in parentheses, I put professional learning communities. Then we use those questions to guide our thinking through that process. So because this is a very neat initiative, we want to roll out the red carpet and make sure that things are done right. So here are some specific next steps that we want to take to make sure that this initiative is a success. So we will continue the collaboration with Lake Sumter State College. Ron and I will continue to meet weekly just to touch bases and make sure, and I think that's been going well. Also, provide ongoing support to the schools to ensure that there is a seamless implementation. So support to guidance counselors, support to the principals, support to the teachers with whatever aspect they need and they need support with. Also, planning and organizing additional parent nights. I know we had some initial parent nights, but we want to make sure that we have parent nights that are ongoing so our parents all along the way are sure about what's happening with the program. Also, plan and organize parent and student orientation. So not only the one that we're doing in August, but making sure that we continue that. And then also continue the teacher PLCs throughout the year. So those are just some of the things that we've thought about initially to make sure that this initiative keeps moving in a very positive manner. And then questions?
Thank you very much. The only question, this is great. The only question I have is, we had received a letter, Dr. Moxley, about the funding. And then I saw in the paper that even though the governor hasn't signed it, the six million is back in the budget?
Let's cross our fingers to that, yes. Yes, it is, it is currently written in the budget. It's on the line, but he hasn't signed it yet and he does have the veto authority power. But that money for the budget is still, is there. Came at the, came, I think, Monday or Tuesday before.
The very, very end, very end. And I did get a copy of, and I will leave this with Natalie, but I did get a, get a copy of the South Lake Science Lab facility that the square footage is about 52,000 square feet. And, and it's going to be a two-story facility with the first floor having nursing labs and classroom, bio, biology and physics labs, nursing faculty offices, general offices. The second floor will house chemistry, anatomy, and physiology, flex labs, classrooms for all sciences, and then science faculty space. And I will pass down to you, you have one.
I do have a couple extra from the governor's meeting.
I do have a picture of the front of the building and then there is a map. So I wanted you to be able to see that here. If you'd like to.
Oh, thank you.
Look at that. And this is on the agenda tonight? Is it, is it on the agenda tonight? No? Okay. And there is a, I do have one copy of the master plan phase where you can see the location on the south, the Clermont campus. So again, I will leave this with Natalie if you're interested in looking at that schematic. But you do have a footprint of it as well. He just came with everything.
Well, we happen to have a governance meeting on Thursday at the end of the day, so there.
Well, that was right. That's awesome. Any comments?
The only, the only comment I have is, is I was questioning where the, where we stood with the funding and what would happen to the program if we didn't get the funding. And about the same time it came out that they've allocated the funding. But I was told that regardless, this would continue forward.
That is correct.
It would just slow down the construction of this campus.
That is correct.
But everything else is intact and we're moving forward.
Right. And if you'll remember, we have the first two years of the program.
Right.
So we are actually starting next, this coming year when we open the doors. The two, we'll have two years, so there, we're scaling up to FEED into the state college. So yeah, that's why they're able to, that's why the funding needs to come through. So they can go ahead and get started, so.
I have two, I wanted to make two comments. My first being, while you have those teachers together and they're talking about what students need to know and be able to do, are they talking about EOC and putting that together? So it's just.
Yes, absolutely. The teachers that are a part of designing the program, when we look at the course description from the DOE, there are specific standards that go along with that. And the beauty of it is that a lot of them are Language Arts Florida standards. There are some that are specific to like job shadowing and internship, but most of them are around the Florida standards for English Language Arts. So that the students are receiving support and instruction in that at English Language Arts as well. So, yeah, and they'll be a part of that.
And my second is for you guys that I need to abstain from the vote because I work for UCF. Okay.
She took care of it. Okay, any other?
Yeah, I've got one. As we talk about next step.
As we talk about next steps, I know we've, we've mentioned a few times that the idea of this program is to be able to create something so incredibly amazing that we would be able to duplicate or replicate it on the north end of the county. Where are we in laying that foundation?
Well, we have a, a good model, and we have the governance model. When this came, and I know there's been a lot of questions, says, why is it in the south end of the county? Because South Lake Hospital came to us.
Sure.
With the need and the proposal, and this has been discussed for a number of years. And so we've now worked through the model. The, I mean, we're, we're ready to go. We can replicate this in the health academies anywhere in our county. So we need the hospital partnership with that, and we've already started to have some conversations here in with, well, Dr. Bogus was in.
So those conversations have, have begun?
They're, they're in infancy stages.
Okay.
Now, the, the other question is, is that it does not have to be health. If the need is manufacturing, the governance model still works. What we have to, what we have to line up is the college, does the college have the program for us to feed to?
Right.
And does the university have the program for, you know, it to feed with? Because we have direct connect, but we also have the two plus two, and, and so the health, the industry demand was great in the, with South Lake Hospital. So that's how this all came to be. It wasn't that we came and said, we want to do this in the south end of the county, and we don't want to do it in the other parts of our county. It was that the job need and the partnership came, and, and South Lake Hospital invested a million dollars into this program. So they really drove and initiated it for all practical purposes. And Mark, I have had conversations with Shannon Elswig, who helped facilitate all this down there, and he is going to meet with Dr. Moxley and I and the CEO of the hospital.
Great. We're working on it.
And I know in the, like the, at Leesburg High School, we have the Power Academy, so there's a lot of other avenues that you can use the same model for.
I would say the real big key here is going to be the internships, an actual hands-on piece within the hospital.
Right.
Which goes beyond the million dollars that they've donated, because they're looking at hiring additional support in their education services to be able to work with these students. Now, if we look at the 130 that we have in two years that are going to be there, and then if you double that number, the logically, you're looking at 250 to 300 students in that program, and that's a lot for a hospital to take on in terms of arranging and coordinating actual hands-on physical things. So that's where that key partnership model, I think, is really there, and it's nice that they've stepped forward to do that.
I think that's a really good point, so thank you for highlighting that, because you've got to have all the pieces.
Yep.
To make it work. You can't be absent. You know, I know Mr. Fix talks about his three-legged stool.
Yeah.
That's the same concept here, that all the pieces came together, because the power is in all the components.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I know that Stephanie has to leave at 4:00. So I'm going to bring up, we have, well, it's on Facebook, which I do happen to get on. There's a petition out there by a small majority of people who would like to see single-member districts put on the ballot in November. Mr. Mathias was going to bring it up, but I had already talked to Dr. Moxley and said, I would bring it up for discussion, that we, if, if this board is wanting to review that process and come up with a recommendation as to whether it goes on the ballot in November or not, I need to know that from all board members. But let me give you a little history, because I am the old one here. Back in 1986, there was an outpouring of community leaders who decided that we needed to go to single-member districts in the school board and the county commission. It got voted in. The very next time, in 2000, in 1990, it got put back on the ballot to take it back to the way it was. Because what ends up happening is, if you do it in one, you, if you have single-member districts, you may have a very strong person in one district, and they try to ramrod the whole board. The public also sees it as you only get one vote. They want to, the public wanted to vote for everybody, the same thing we went through with the superintendent, those type of things. They want to have more than one vote on a board, so they want to vote for all five board members, no matter what board it is. The cities have done it in some instances, and it usually backfires on them also. That is my personal history of it, and if you want it researched and, and you want to discuss it at a workshop, we can do that. But I didn't know how the rest of you felt about us initiating. I think if the public wants it, and not just a particular group, which is what it looks like right now, let them get the petition signed, let them bring it forward, and let them put it on the ballot. Because then that's up to the public, and that's what they want done. And that's what happened in 86. I was working at the county, so I know how it was done. So, Stephanie?
No, I agree with you. I think that, that would make more sense. I think there's definitely some pros after running a campaign to be.
Oh, the expense, yes.
Of course.
But I, I did it for seven, it was under $7,000.
Sure.
And I know, yeah, I've got the name recognition, that's what everybody says. But you can, because if you go out and you did it, you go out and you walk, you're, you know, where, and you go to everything.
Also, if it's a county-wide election, you have to be committed to it.
Yes.
I can tell you that 100% of it, and you have to put the work in, and you have to put the effort in. And you have to know the county, because the decisions that we're making up here aren't single-member districts.
Just, right.
And I mean, just talk about the impact fees for a minute, and the side of the county that's growing, and if I was purely elected in the Eustis-Umatilla area, what would I be fighting for right now?
Okay, good input. Mark?
Yeah, you know, if there is a, a great interest from the, the citizens, I'd like to see a, probably a stronger base come forward, that, I mean, I, I understand the concerns on both sides, and so, you know, understanding the concerns from both sides, I, I don't mind discussing it, but, you know, I, I'd like to see a stronger support from the, the community first.
Okay. Roseanne?
I agree with what, what has been said here. I don't want to take staff time to go and research something when we still have the budget to work on, and we have a number of other things that really take priority, and that if we do have a, a group, a large group of people that do sign a petition and come before us, then, then we'll listen. But I can't see putting in the work for ju, just what appears to be a, a handful of individuals. And I think that when you run countywide, it's like you said, you make the commitment, and it takes a lot of time, effort, work, and, and funds. But I think we, we, it's important to know our district, but it's also important to know the, the county.
Okay, Bill?
Odd man out, because I actually would support it. Having run two campaigns, running them throughout the county, there is a, they are completely diverse as far as the populace and demographics, and understanding that's important, but it's also being rooted in your own community, in your own district that you represent. I think we would spend more time, we would develop candidates that didn't have to look at these enormous amounts of money, the commitment of traveling throughout the district on a campaign. In the last election, we saw some 20,000 undervotes, because people obviously either didn't know or didn't care. And, and I think from a grassroots standpoint, that a local district race is running, because, because at the end of the day, we are responsible for the entire county. That's where I flip on the other side. But from the standpoint of recruiting those that are active in their communities, the fear of trying to raise the dollars, I think, deters some people that might come forward otherwise. So that's just where my head's at. I, I understand 100% both sides of the discussion, and if it doesn't sound like we have a lot of support, then I'm good with that, that I'll workshop on it. But I would support looking at a model like, I don't know how much staff needs to spend time, I already looked it up, that we have close to us Hillsborough County, that's a district. We have Duval County, we have Orange County. Those are all district with at-large seats. So again, a discussion would be, do we add an at-large component, and that would be an expense ongoing to the, to the district, maybe not. I just thought, I mean, I just think it's worthy of a conversation, because we're going to have the November, November sales tax anyway. Are there enough merits? And I'm hearing there isn't, so I'll just go spank myself.
Well, the other part of that too, Bill, is I really don't want to, and I'm going to use this word, muck up the system for the penny sales tax by adding some other issue to it, because I'm already hearing disgruntled people that were doing this and spending, the county's spending $400,000 to put this sales tax on there on an off-year. So I mean, you know, when we do something, it needs to be because the public has told us they want it done, and I haven't seen that outcry. That's.
Yeah, but, but I don't know that an outcry doesn't mean that we don't show leadership. And that if.
But I don't.
When, when it was first mentioned to me, and then you began to speak about it, that those that aren't passionate one way or the other go, I mean, and the merits are there either way. I'm just saying, to, to say that we need a whole bunch of people in some colored t-shirt telling us what we need to do, I don't see that. We can show some leadership and say, is this a better model for us? And it may be, I'm actually almost hearing it is not, but, but it may be that it isn't. But bringing it up in closing comments versus an actual workshop where we would really do the, the critical analysis of the issue and really speak about it, rather than it be a knee-jerk, I just think this is an important decision that did, if we're just going to dismiss it, that's fine. I just think that it warrants more dialogue. And, and the outcome may be the same, by the way.
Do you want more dialogue on it, the rest of the board? Right now? Do you want more dialogue? Do you want to talk about it at a regular scheduled workshop where it's on as an agenda item?
It doesn't matter to me either way. I, I'm good with it either way, because I do, I can, I mean, I'm, I legitimately can see the pros of it, but I also can see the cons of it.
Is it something we need to be addressing now? Is it something?
If the budget's approved, probably not, but then again, if it's talking about the timeliness of an election, probably so, so.
Okay.
I, I'm there, you know, and, and I, I see the, the pros and cons either way, and for that reason, I think it's worthy of a conversation, but you know, once again, it goes back to, yeah, I, I don't know how much public interest there is, or whether or not.
We'll just put it on for the 13th, so we'll have a.
So it doesn't, in my mind, doesn't do any harm to, to talk about it.
Okay. When it's on advertised items, that way, if somebody wants to show up, they can. Does that work? You got half of it?
I'm trying to push this through.
Oh, yeah. We'll talk about it, but I don't know, I'm not changing. Kagan, Kagan update.
I'm glad we have an open and quiet mind.
Yeah, I, no, I've been through this over the last 30 years, so. Kagan update, we did meet, Dr. Moxley and I, with Mr. Johnson and Mr. Morrison this morning to go over some more issues that we need to have addressed, and Mr. Morrison is working on that right now. So it's still going, okay? Just wanted to give you that update, so y'all knew what was happening. And Bill, we need an update on what the PAC is doing on the penny sales tax. Are you ready to do that?
Yeah, I can do it real quick, because there's not much to it. Legit. Okay. To date, we reached out to some 384 Lake County vendors, and we've raised a total of That's where we are.
Ooh.
So.
Okay, that's the monetary side of it. Tell me the other side of it.
Well, you can't do anything without the monetary. The monetary is the whole key. So, excuse me, with this exception, that, that there has been a, a reach out to all the clubs and civic organizations, I'm booked right now for five, that those, I'm sitting down this, excuse me, not this week, it's going to be next week now, and I'm getting the vendor list from, from the county. I did a public request for that, so that we can enlist the aid of the chair to get involved with helping us to raise dollars as we move towards this ultimate mailing. So, so the dollars, and if any of you.
And how much was that again?
We need one, we've raised 42.
What have you gotten?
Forty-two eighty, 4284.
4,200?
We need 160 for a reasonable campaign. So entities like, for an example, I started the campaign, give a penny for every dollar that, that we, that we paid you.
Mm-hmm.
If you looked at Duke Energy, that would be $73,000. They gave us 2,500. So I had a one-on-one meeting with Jerry after the, the baseball game, and he's going to go back and see what he can do now. So we are, until, I got to tell you, the one thing that has benefited us, in my opinion, is there is now a call to arms, because there is a fraction group that has now come out against the one cent. And I think that everyone was sitting back on their laurels going, this is a no-brainer, particularly after we had the, the study done by Bruce Barcello saying it was going to be a slam dunk, and maybe not so much. As early as today, because a member of the opposition is volunteering to have speaking engagements, that it's interesting, I got two phone calls, and they're saying, do you want to be the counterpoint to this engagement? So they're reaching out to me, and, not debate, but just a presentation of the facts. That's all we need to do, because overwhelmingly, it's clear that, that we need, we particularly need the sales tax. So now then, as always, that any, any involvement that y'all can give, the whole board, that we now, it's sort of a call to arms now.
Okay, we, we, Dr. Moxley and I discussed this also with Mr. Johnson today, this was one of our topics, and I'm going to put on the workshop on the 13th. We need to vote on the actual list for marketing, because Kelly from the county, the PIO over there, has sent us the list of how they're doing it on their website, et cetera, so that we can send it up here, and Sherry's working with her to do the same counterpart here for us to have.
One cent?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So we need, we got that, it was the red list, is that?
Well, we called, you know, on our capital plan, we had those schools that were.
The ones that needed help now. And then plus the other things, like the infrastructure for technology that needs to be upgraded everywhere, the maintenance, which would be the fleet, white-in, all that needs to be marketed. And I've got the folders from before, and what we did before was just said, the last 15 years, we spent it on this, and you had pictures of it and that stuff, and you put that on your webpage. So I want to bring that back to y'all and get a vote, so we actually have, as the five of us have voted on what we're going out to speak about. Is that good? Okay. That'll be on the 13th. Okay, now, Stephanie, you have anything?
No, I'm good. I won't be at the meeting tonight, I know that you know that. It is, it is my last Monday night class at UCF. I'm putting that on.
Forever?
Forever.
Woo-hoo! Thank you. Mark?
I'll save my comments for this evening.
Okay.
I'm good.
Roseanne?
Oh, I'm good then.
Okay. And I'm good. Dr. Moxley? I do have one. There was a public input statement about the agenda tonight. The $1.5 million, I'm looking at the agenda, that's Title II, Part A, which is a, one of our title dollars, and that is the specific requirement. You can't use that money for anything else, so I wanted to make sure that you all understood that was the item. Okay. I think Mr. Tippett's left. Okay. Mr. Attorney?
Let me make one comment to that, and maybe it's the wording that you sometimes, training